I think is going to be joining us.
The internet. I'm connecting, but without a connection.
Okay, I know he said.
It says I'm connected, but it says right underneath.
Connecting.
No internet connection.
All right, so let's open the meeting up. This is a special joint meeting of the City Council and the Board of Finance. Today's date is Monday, May 23rd, 2022. Participating in the meeting in person, I have Councilman Waldron, Councilwoman Hona, Councilwoman Ruett, Councilman Oliver. I have Board of Finance members Christopher Anderson, Chris Bayes, James Wright, and Lorraine Pesky. And via Zoom, I I don't see anybody yet, but I do know that we had a member or two that were planning on joining us.
I think Kathy's iPad is Mark Bushka usually the other.
Yes, yep, that's Mark. I see. Okay, thank you, Mark. Participating via Zoom for the Board of Finance is Mr. Bushka. Before we begin the meeting, could we please stand and place their side?
To the Republic, for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. We have a couple of business items that we can probably put to bed. First, item number one. I will entertain the motion and a vote by the Board of Finance to appoint Clifton Larson Allen LLP, that's CLA of West Hartford, Connecticut, as a city auditor for fiscal year 2022.
Summons.
Thank you, Mr. Bayes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Wright. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, by the City Council, entertaining a motion to appoint CLA of West Hartford as the city auditor for fiscal year 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, I heard Councilman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Ruett. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item three, this is a review and discussion regarding the proposed city budget for fiscal period from July 1, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Doesn't require a motion, however, there are some changes to a few of the departments that I will be asking the council to approve this evening before we hand the budgets off to the Board of Finance. So if you'll indulge me, in Department four, the council had previously approved the Building Department budget. You will recall we were moving funds out of vehicle replacement so that we can track them in a separate department. And we are now correcting those vehicle replacement numbers. So at this level, level three, which is the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6th column from the left, you will see the only change is a $5,012 adjustment increase, which now results in a department budget of $397,957. I would need a motion to approve this amended budget as presented.
So.
Actually, I think the council first, and then, yes, thank you, Councilman Oliver.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Hona. Are there questions?
Hello? Hi.
Armin's here.
Oh, Armin is here, good, okay. For the record, Councilman Manichia is also present. If there are no questions, I'll call this motion all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
In Department 13, same thing, same column, we're looking for a 2,000, this is a $2,506 increase, which makes that adjustment that we needed to make in vehicle replacement. And the budget that is being approved by the council for handoff to the Board of Finance is now, oh my goodness, $298,381. Do I have a council approval for this?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver.
Second.
Second by Councilman Manichia. Questions on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Department 22, same thing. This is the level 3, 4, which is the council add or delete. You'll see this is an addition of $288,790 to reflect vehicle replacement obligations. And this budget now stands at $6,281,953. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia, second by Councilman Oliver, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 23, or Department 23, I'm sorry. This is the Police Department, same column. No. Same column, same line item, an increase of $140,083 for a budget total of $10,026,163. Is that the right amount? Okay, thank you, Armin. Do I have a motion to approve? That's woman, right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hona. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Department 23.21 Animal Control, same column, same line item. This results in an increase of $5,630, department total $363,743.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia.
Second.
Second by Councilman Waldron, questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 23.24 is the Traffic Maintenance, same column, same line item. It's a $14,710 adjustment increase. And the new budget total is $556,658. Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
Second.
Second by Councilman Manichia. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And for the record, we can just reflect that Councilman Kevin Earl is also in attendance. All right, item, Department 25, Public Works. Same column, same line item, a $2,615 increase. The department total is now $178,628.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia. And second by Councilwoman Hona. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item for Department 27, this is the Engineering Department. Same line item, same column, it is a $9,017 increase. The I'm looking for a motion to approve this budget amount of $761,160. I'll move it. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruett.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Manichia. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Department 31, our Public Works Department. Same column, same line item. This is a $328,267 increase, and the budget stands at Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Manichia. Are there questions on this amount or the budget adjustment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Department 38, in Recreation, same column, same line item, this is a $2,470 increase. And this budget total is $557,435. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia, second by Councilwoman Ruett. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And finally, in Department 44, to offset all of those increases in those departments or reappropriation of the funds, you will see in column three, oh, wait a minute, no, Department 44, level level three, line item 5751, which is Municipal Employee Retirement, you will see a reduction of $14,200. And in 5752 Police and Fire Retirement Fund, you'll see a reduction of $14,200 for a total of $28,400 reduction in this line item. And the reason for those reductions is those were reflective of the fees for the administration of accounts, not a reflection on any reduced contribution. So now this department total stands at $14,860,725. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver.
Second.
Second by Councilman Manichia. Questions? Yeah?
Like, if we get our fees. And, uh, I, I, they're usually, it's not over $2. Okay. I thought we gave a good point.
That would be great.
Every other year, we do the evaluation. So there's a piece for that, but.
Other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, Department 49 is where you'll see the the, all of those transfers that we just, or reappropriations, I say, I should say, that were just put into the various departments for vehicle replacement. You will see in this department where we track the lump sum and then it gets divided between the departments proportionally. You will see this department has a reduction of the total amount that we committed to funding vehicle replacement, $800,000, resulting in a department total at this point of $24,064. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
Second.
And second by Councilman Oliver. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that completes the department transfers. And one more motion I will need from the council members so that we can turn this budget over to the Board of Finance for their deliberation in context with revenues, for the purposes of setting the mill rate. I would be looking for a motion to approve the total of all of the departments that have been approved individually in the sum of $62,77,508 for a total city budget proposal. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver.
Second.
Can you repeat the number again?
Yes, I can. And in your package, it is the summary totals. It is this six pitch font document. You can, yeah, younger eyes.
Oh, it's there, okay. 62077508?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so that is the level 3, 4 Mayor Council
Okay.
approval. So that is, that's the amount that we're prepared to hand off to the Board of Finance for consideration. The motion was made by Councilman Oliver, second by Councilman Manichia. Are there other questions? Can you do it in percentage? Sorry. What the percentage increase is from? 5.73%. I think that's the last column of that document.
Still with 5.73%?
Yes. And I would only add to this conversation that through the tremendous work of our Budget Subcommittee with some really solid recommendations and work that was done at the Board of Safety level, we were successful in working with the department heads to reduce that original request by $3,361,497. So a considerable amount of work has already happened on the city side with regard to vetting the requests and looking at this through the lens of what a mill rate impact would be. Other thoughts, questions, or concerns before we hand it off to the Board of Finance?
Yeah, I have.
Yes? Please.
Within this budget, is there money, very small item, is there money for, do we open the pool this summer?
Yes, there is.
There is, we will be opening it.
Yes. She's gonna make you talk into a microphone.
Oh. Yeah.
And he worked as a PM doing what, for how long?
Read this.
You want?
Would you like me to repeat the question?
Do you need the question repeated? You got it. No, I think we're good.
All right.
All right. Other questions? All right, and then we'll call this motion all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Most, okay. Now, floor is open for questions from the Board of Finance.
Mayor, these, these are the level cuts that came after Budget Subcommittee?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes. So the level two cuts in each of these departments, I think it's level two, you see Subcommittee/Mayor add, delete? That was the second column. Those are all the recommendations that came as a result of the work of the Subcommittee. Council approved that those amounts and these last bits are the adjustments in vehicle replacements and some additional savings that Robin identified.
When it comes to police, is the deputy chief positioned in their half year?
It is.
Okay. And how many recruits?
No new recruits. They have, I believe, at the time, 12 vacancies that they, 11 vacancies. In this budget proposal, there are four of those positions that were going to be budgeted at the half year and the rest of the full year.
And the fire?
In the fire department, there are two recruits.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Miss Pesky?
And to affect this 5.73 increase, the increase in the, in the mill rate without taking money from any of our other sources would be?
Without tapping any one-time revenue sources. We are a little over three mills. It's a three mill impact, including Board of Education's appropriation. Is that correct? Robin, am I? So those one-time revenues that we historically look at for new members of the council are the Internal Service Fund, that's our health insurance fund, if it's well reserved. And there's an opportunity to return some of those funds to the taxpayers in the form of a reduction in budget requests. Our fund balance, again, if it's well reserved, exceeds the policy that was adopted. Over 7%, up to 10% is always the target on that, on that fund balance. Those are funds that we could use. So I would say we're somewhere around three mil.
And this proposal is giving the Board of Ed a 7.2% increase of 5 million?
That would, that's their request.
Okay.
Yeah.
But so, so you're saying if this, exactly how it's lined up, that's a three-mill impact, if everything is exactly how it is on here? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
And this is only operating, no capital?
Board of Education's, all of our capital is
Isn't.
included in this operating. Each of these departments has a capital line item. Yeah, it, it's, it's in excess of three mills. Obviously, I would be seeking some guidance from both boards as to where you want to land and your comfort level with utilizing those one-time resources again. We've used them a number of years. It has come up a number of times in our bond rating and the official statements. Our treasurer, Dan Farley, is here, and, you know, he can certainly attest to the fact that that comes up with every interview that we have and the S and P rating call. However, our explanation with a rock-solid policy and what's appropriate for a municipality this size with a budget this size for those, I, I don't like using the, the term rainy day, but only because we have that policy and we are doing it responsibly, it hasn't had a negative impact on us. But it is always identified as something we should be careful of. Armin Manichia, Councilman Manichia, you have a question?
Yeah, two questions. So what is the mill rate increase just for the city, city-side budget?
So for this, it's hard to break that out. It would be difficult for me to break that out because the revenues are lumped together. It's, it's one, it's one revenue budget that gets applied to both spending plans.
And then, talking about the one-time use of funds, approximately what, how much safely do we have available to use?
So
At this point.
So the Congress Controller, Robin Stanzigelli, and I are continuing to monitor that, looking at where we think we're going to end the year with projected surpluses so that we can provide the Board of Finance a good picture of what we think we're going to have in fund balance. But I would think that there would be room for us to access less than we did last year. But perhaps somewhere around 2 million.
Two.
Two plus, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
And last year, we took 3.1 million. My goal, when we were going through this exercise, was to try to reduce our reliance on those one-time resources by a third, knowing that next year, we are going to have considerably more debt service that rolls onto our books. But when the Board of Finance is reviewing this through the lens that they look at it, and they're looking at it through the lens of the impact to the taxpayer, you know, and that's their job. We'll bring all of that information forward, of course, I'll share it with everybody before the agendas are released. Councilman Ruett?
Thank you, Mayor, and I do appreciate the work of the Subcommittee's. Don't want that job. And I do appreciate the time invested in, in where we're at today. I did approve tonight with hesitancy, to be honest with you, because I don't want to see a mill increase. This is a time with gas prices going up and sort of the burden that's put on, you know, the citizens of Torrington. Any increase in the mill rate, I think at this point is is a burden. So without reflecting, I'll look at our treasurer, too much, you know, borrowing from our debt. I do feel it would be difficult for me to consider any kind of increase in the mill rate.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other questions? Lorraine, Council, or Board of Finance member Pesky?
However, the ARPA money is allowing us to do, going to allow us to do a number of projects that we have put off or would have included in this budget or wanted to include in this budget. So I think we need to remember that. And those, you all have discussed that and, and we've looked at it. That's that's a blessing because these are things, mostly a great deal of the capital improvement and, and also the radios, all those kinds of things that we have not been able to do and need to do to protect us. So in terms of their needing to possibly build, be a mill rate increase, I think we're, we're looking at some good things that we're spending it on within the budget that we're allowed to because ARPA money couldn't be used for our operating expenses. So this is what it's costing to to run the city and to make and to acknowledge the work of all of our public safety, our public works people, and all the people in City Hall who, though the ARPA money could have been used to give people one-time increases and, and all that kind of thing. We didn't do that in, in Torrington. But they all did do some amazing work over the last several years to keep the city safe under dire circumstances. So increases in their wages and benefits had already been negotiated through various contracts. And, and that's part of what drives this increase. We always know that it's people that, that make a city run and it's people and their benefits that cost. So, and that there isn't any of us who aren't paying more for everything, every time we buy something. So if to not have a, a little bit of a mill increase again, I think might be a little short-sighted. We have to, to manage it because we've got some big chunks of stuff coming down the road that the city decided that, that citizens and the taxpayers decided to, to invest in. And we're all waiting, awaiting that with bated breath.
I think something for the council toes, so kind of consider here, and obviously, we're not going to put the cart for the horse on, on what's going to happen next week. But, you know, the motor vehicle tax rate is, is lowering to 36, 85, what is it?
546, 32.46.
32.46. So that overall reduction not only saves taxpayer money, but it cuts revenue for the city. And, and basing, basing that off the 2020 grand list and, and that's our reimbursement from the state. we lose a major portion of money because we're using that 2020 grand list. That's where we saw the 25% increase in the 2021 grand list. So, you know, there's a lot of factors to consider. Obviously, nobody enjoys a tax increase and certainly not now. But it's just something that this board has to at least keep in its arsenal and consider because of the times we're in and the circumstances we have in front of us. So it's very complex and, you know, this this broad overview is great. I mean, it's an overall nine percent increase in spending. But, you know, our revenue isn't following up on that major increase in spending. So just food for thought.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ruwet?
I don't know. I wanted to just follow up with, this is Pesky, the No Finance member Pesky. And however, is the ARPA money is one-time money. It's our money. It's, you know, it's not, it's free money, but it's our money and we need not to forget that. And it is going to give some of the enhancements on projects that have been delayed. And I think it is really going to, you and I, serve on that subcommittee. I'm excited about it. It's like $10 million of things that we have not been able to do in terms of project. But to the point of the car tax, you know, people are going to have a much higher car tax this year because of the assessment of their vehicles.
Much lower, significantly lower.
Than last year?
Because not only is the motor vehicle mill rate dropping, but what they base those values off of is the 2020 grand list, not the 2021 grand list.
So they'll make up for it on the price of gas.
Of course, yeah.
So either way, it's still out of the packet. I guess, you know, that's, at this point, if we could delay the mill rate because we have the ARPA money in this year, I know it can't go to the operations. I know it's for the projects as defined in its eligibility. But I think more than ever, it would, in my opinion, be better to delay and kind of increase the mill rate. I know each budget, each department, and I don't know what the percentage is. She knows the minutia of everything. I know her mind is turning. But every department does have a contingency fund or account or line item. She's going to say not everyone, but the ones that have the larger departments. There's, it's just, it's just not the right time to increase the mill rate. So I appreciate, again, allowing me to have a few comments, but I just, this is a lot of money coming into the city, $10 million to use for ARPA. I think we can do the things we want to do. I also have a question in terms of the salaries and benefits. Is it about eighty-five to ninety percent in terms of the overall budget?
The total budget? I don't think it's that high.
In the seventies.
Seven, yeah, definitely.
High seventies, close to eighty.
Close to eighty, okay. I don't know, I got Robin giving me mixed. Okay.
And so, so that speaks to.
You can't touch that.
It's, it's, it would be difficult to do that without reducing the people.
Right. But you also have vacancies in every department like any other business. That's hard to fill. So you save sometimes when you have a vacancy. I'm looking at the chiefs here.
Vacancy savings, I, but I mean, that's something that we're thinking about with the police, the deputy chief, is that it would take a while
Six months.
to hire one. So we don't have to fund the whole salary this year. You know, that, that amount doesn't come up to millions of dollars. The only way to affect that is getting rid of bodies.
So I see Mr. Bush has had his hand raised.
Yeah. Just, could you give us an idea, maybe Robin, this is a question for Robin? How many tax dollars does one mil provide?
If you want to come to the microphone. I do, yes. But he asked you.
Yeah, we're, it's about 1.8 billion per mil.
And I have a question for, maybe the mayor, you can address this. How does the revenue budget look in comparison to last year? And do you have any numbers you can rely on from the state yet?
Yes, we do. I will tell you, our revenues will be down, net, they will be down. And going to piggyback off of what Chris Bayes was saying. So it's a mixed blessing. Our taxpayers are going to see a reduction in their car taxes. You know, the mill rate is frozen at thirty-two point four-six. The state is going to reimburse the municipality for the gap, but unfortunately, they're reimbursing the municipalities and the prior grand list. So the 2020 grand list, the 2021 grand list jumped 25%. Car sales values went up exponentially. So when we did the math on that, we lose about one, an opportunity to collect another million dollars in taxes. So net, our revenues will be down. On the Board of Education side, the Alliance District funding goes up a million dollars. Of course, you know, that's all budgeted outside of the general revenue account. And some modest upticks here and there on other revenues, but net for general fund purposes, revenues would be down. If all things were equal with a forty-six point one seven mill rate. So to answer the question that I heard earlier about a zero mill rate, what I know, we would have to cut to accomplish no mill rate increase utilizing none of those one-time revenue sources. I would have to eliminate all of the Board of Education's request. All of the city's request was currently standard three million dollars over last year's budget and another 1.7 million dollars. So it's very strategic hitting up those one-time revenue sources. It's very tricky for us to get to that zero mill rate. I'm not comfortable saying that because obviously, my goal is always to go zero. But it's all in operating. It's all positions and salt for the roads and, you know, and asphalt for the, you know, for the construction projects. You know, it's in plain enforcement. It's in land use. It's in building enforcement. So that's the, that's the tough reality we face. And again, we're still utilizing those one-time revenue sources, which we really want to wean ourselves off of. Because we're going to hit a wall sooner or later where those one-time resources are just not there for us. We're at seven percent of fund balance and we can't go any lower than that. Did you, I'm sorry, Mark, did you have a follow-up question to that?
No, not really. I'm just, as we're going to have information in the balance prior to next Tuesday's meeting.
Yes.
As to how much we'll have available.
Yes. Yes, Robin and I are meeting tomorrow afternoon to go over all that.
And it's looking like we will not have used all of what we put aside or we didn't indicated that we could use to balance twenty, twenty-one.
Yes. Councilman Cavanero?
Yeah, in the past, I think the Budget Subcommittee put forward like a rubric of recommendations for where they would, you know, tiers of cuts, where they would want to cut from. Is that existent or are we not?
So the level two, you'll see on each of these departments' pages, there's the level one, which was the department head's request, and level two was the subcommittee's add or delete. And that, those cuts, and I will say what the Budget Subcommittee, Subcommittee's charge to the department heads was to reduce their request, their original request by 50%. So that's the charge that we communicated back to the department heads. And every single department head, chief, chief Tripp, chief Baldwin, Ray Drew, all came forward with their 50% cuts.
Yeah, maybe I misspoke. I guess what I was asking is as a recommendation to the Board of Finance of what the budget would look like if these cuts were made, if these cuts.
Oh, leveled, leveled cuts to achieve a zero mill rate increase?
What would have to be lost to get?
An explanation of what we would lose.
Various moments.
Yeah.
Is that forthcoming or?
That has not been requested of us. It's usually the Board of Finance that asks us that because they, oh, yes. So I'm hoping we set a mill rate on the 31st. But if I'm hearing that's the request from the Board of Finance, I will bring that forward on the 31st.
Even if it's early, that's always very helpful, along with the big spreadsheet.
I assume.
It characterizes what we're looking at.
Yes. Other questions from the Board of Finance for the council or information that council members wish to share with the Board of Finance? Is there, is there a chat going on over there? Am I missing? Okay, we'll hold it for the public hearing. Okay. If I'm not hearing questions or additional charge, all right, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruwet.
Ladies first.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I'm going to move right into the public hearing portion of the meeting. So for the record, I, it is now 7:11 PM. This is we're, a public hearing for the purposes to soliciting citizen input regarding the proposed city budget for fiscal period July 1, 22 to June 30 of 2023. Before I open the meeting to the public, Carol, do we have a notice that should be read into the record? Yes, Mayor.
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Councilmen and the Board of Finance of the City of Torrington will conduct a public hearing on Monday, May 23, 2022, immediately following a special joint meeting starting at 6:30 PM in City Hall Auditorium, 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut, to solicit citizen input regarding the proposed city budget for the fiscal period from July 1, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. All interested parties are invited to attend and be heard in person or by Zoom. In-person attendees will be granted up to three minutes to present their comments. Comments may be submitted in writing to the City Clerk's Office by email to city underscore clerk@torringtonct.org or by mail to 140 Main Street, Torrington, Connecticut. Instructions for participating by phone or online are available at torringtonct.org. Copies of the proposed budget will be available at the offices of the City Comptroller and City Clerk prior to the hearing dated at Torrington, Connecticut, the 13th day of May, 2022. Carol Anderson, City Clerk.
Thank you. All right, with that, I will open the meeting to the public for comments. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment or have questions on the budget proposals? And because it is a public hearing, there was one who said comments in the chat. Can we hear the motion including budget amounts and mill rate again? Yes, please. All right. Okay. So I'm going to call it three times. Second time, anyone from the public wishing to address the board, the boards regarding the budget. Third call, anyone from the public wishing to address the boards regarding the budget. Seeing and hearing none, I will close this public hearing. I will declare the public hearing closed. This public hearing is closed. Thank you very much. Sorry about the heat in the auditorium. Our air conditioning is busted. All right. I do have a special meeting of the City Council, WPCA, following. You're all welcome to stay and watch government at work.
No, 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 that's okay.
No. I will see Board of Finance members on the 31st.
Mayor, what time's that meeting?
On the 31st, we have, is it six o'clock or six, what time is the 31st? Six thirty. It's five o'clock, yes, five o'clock.
Okay.
May 31st at five o'clock.
Thank you.
Especially when there's a public hearing, we want to make sure it's in the year so the public has a chance.
Although this is just as important.
Well, it's the finance.
No, it says that I'm connected, but I'm not connected to anything. You okay, man?
But it's not COVID. I am testing. I know. My husband's freaking out. Although I don't know if there's a test for it. All right, then I'm going to go ahead and call this special meeting of the City Council to order. For the record, Monday, May 23, 2022, it is now 7:15 PM. Present and attending in person, Councilwoman Waldron, Councilwoman Hona, Councilwoman Ruwet, Councilwoman Cavanero, Councilwoman Oliver. Participating via Zoom is Councilwoman Minichi. Item one on this agenda, item one on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the May 16, 2022 meeting. Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver. And second by Councilwoman Hona. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. There's a lot of noise. Is Eleanor's iPad noisy again? Okay. I do too. Is everybody muted? Okay. Item two on the agenda. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to authorize the Personnel Director to enter into an agreement between the City and the Police Union Local 442 Council for AFNE AFL-CIO regarding the adoption of a deferred retirement option plan commonly referred to as DRAP. Do you have a motion to approve?
So both.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, and second by Councilwoman Hona. All right, so the floor is open and Jamie Lemar, Personnel Director, is here to talk a little bit about the agreement.
Good evening, everyone. By now, you probably have seen my memo from May, not May, March 17, twice. I had submitted it back in March and then again for this meeting this evening. A very high-level view of what a drop plan is. Hopefully, you all had a chance to take a look at it.
Okay. I'm sorry to interrupt. Is it possible that your microphone is, could be moved a little closer? We're having a little difficulty hearing you.
My voice doesn't help matters either.
No, I don't. Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Okay, I'll talk loud. I'm good at that. All right, so you have my memo. I tried to give you just a very, you know, quick overview of what a drop plan is. We started looking at this as an option for our police department because, like many other municipalities throughout the state and frankly, throughout the country, you know, we're experiencing a shortage of police officers. And so one of the tools that we thought might help us to sort of stem the tide as we try to recruit new officers was to keep those officers who are getting ready to retire for a few more years. And so essentially, how it works is, once you become eligible to retire after 25 years of service or after 10 years of service and being age 55, you can become eligible for drop. And what that means is, instead of collecting your monthly pension amount, the city holds on to it, puts it aside in the pension fund and hold on, hold on to it for you. and hold on, hold on to it for you until such time as you're done with drop. The minimum number of years to commit for drop is two years and the maximum is five. Once you've completed drop, so then while you're in drop, you're working as you always have. So if you're a lieutenant, you're working as you always have. And when you're done with drop, then you get that lump sum that the city's been holding that was your pension money that we would have been paying you had you retired. Is pretty much it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions? And Chief Baldwin is also here to um speak about the reason for our pursuing this, if there are questions.
I just, you know, this is some. So I, there are three other municipalities that are doing this, uh, as you indicated in your memo. And this is something very different, creative, I think, particularly within the um period that we're in, particularly not being able to find a lot of officers. I understand it. It's a retention. Is there a timeframe? So um with this special kind of exception or program, um, is there a time when it will end at some point? Is that when all the positions are full or we're in a different environment in terms of hiring?
Uh, we have not discussed that, Councilwoman Rouette, but I would say that it, it will have a shelf life because as it stands right now, you know, the force and maybe the chief knows this number better, but I think we're not quite at fifty fifty with fifty percent in pension and fifty not, you know, and it, and the other fifty in the defined contribution plan, but um this really is only for those who are in the pension plan. Right? Because what you're doing is deferring your pension. So that's something obviously we can look at down the road if we feel that it's something that's not, no longer necessary. But there is at this point no expiration date, so to speak, on this.
Okay, so those who are not in the pension plan who are in the, is it a four oh one K or whatever, you know, plan that the newer officers are in? I'm sorry? Four oh one K?
No, it's a, well, it's a four oh one, but it's not a K. It's a.
Four oh three B.
No, it isn't. It is a defined, it is a defined contribution plan.
Okay, whatever number it is. Um, so I didn't mean to throw you off on the numbers, but so this wouldn't apply necessarily to any of the um police officers or anyone else that are part of that plan, just those who are part of the pension plan. Okay, thank you.
I would also say that, you know, there's some of the, so while you're in drop, the um benefits of the collective bargaining agreement still apply to you because you're still considered an employee. Um, but we did, you know, recognize there were certain things that wouldn't make sense um to offer to those in drop, and that would be the education, right? So we're not gonna pay for you to continue to get your education when we know in three years' time, if you elect a three-year drop plan, that you're gonna be leaving. Um, and we also agreed that there would be no um promotions during that time, unless the city found itself in a position where no one wanted to take, you know, say a captain position. Um, and we could look at someone who was in the drop, but um generally speaking, we would not be promoting anyone who was in the drop plan.
Thank you. Questions, Councilwoman Hona?
And I think although you listed three cities, I do know of at least one other municipality doing it, at least with their fire, maybe their police and fire around. I think this is gaining popularity because everybody's looking for qualified, trained employees, so I understand why we would have it. I would assume that this memorandum is only until the expiration of the contract. So that could be a time when you suddenly find that there's a, it's a lot easier to hire in twenty twenty three. You could always change it then, right?
Yes.
Have, has the city entertained this? Maybe it's not necessary, but have you entertained it with any other departments, fire department or um City Hall or anything like that, or is this really just a way to do it for the police department?
Right now it is strictly the police department because of the challenge that we have filling those vacancies. Uh, I know that the um Fire Chief Trip, who was, I guess he's gone, he, he um did uh read about this on the agenda. He did express that he thought the fire department would be interested in this. Um, again, because we simply cannot um recruit, we can't fill these vacancies. We're struggling with this. You know, you swear in three new officers and two days later, two days later, two of them are gone. You've got one surviving candidate. It gets increasingly uh more difficult for us to fill those vacancies. Um, my, my thought is right now this fills an urgent need. Any other departments or uh pension, pensioners? Um, I think we're gonna have to give some good long thought about.
I have one follow-up question um for the chief. Do you have any idea, and I know it'll probably be anecdotal at this point, but do you have an idea of how many officers were planning on retiring but might hang around if this was put in place?
Other questions? Yes, Councilman Cavanero.
Yeah, a related question that now both, I mean, if this is a necessity, it is. I mean, to um this Rowett's point, I wasn't clear. I mean, um Councilwoman Hona seemed to have a clearer idea than Jamie about how to um uh eliminate this going forward, right? That it, would it be negotiable then during the contract?
So there's two ways. Councilwoman Hola um is correct. There are two ways that this could be sunsetted. Uh, through contract negotiations. Um, it's, this is a pension issue. The pension um contract is negotiated separate from the police contract. So it could be negotiated permanently into that or permanently out of that. Um, or we uh let it sunset um as the final pensioners um leave, retire from the city. So there are two ways.
Wouldn't that be rolling? Wouldn't, wouldn't people, police be, well, you know, or the, it's more?
And Jamie, this is a contract negotiations question. Uh, in the contract negotiations, if this M O U is embedded in the next contract, it becomes a part of that contract. Usually, once it's in the contract, it's pretty difficult to get it out of the contract. Right, right. There's always a bargaining chip. I can tell you with confidence that um I don't see that being an option for us for the simple reason that I don't think it's going to get easier to recruit candidates to the police department. Not here, not in Hartford or Waterbury. I mean, all of the mayors that I speak with, they're all facing the exact same situation. So I think that what we're looking at is an M O U so that those few those few um retirees or few police officers that can retire um can take this action right away. They need this so that if July first or August first is their retirement date, they know this is an option for them, that they can stay here um for three years or five years if they so choose. How it gets embedded in the next contract negotiations is up to both the union and management.
Another call question.
Please.
Um, if anybody knows the answer, uh, how many active officers have the defined benefit pension plan currently?
What about fifty fifty and that, Chief, right? So, eighty? Yeah.
I think I know the answer to that. I think it's about fifty of our officers. So it's, it's not quite fifty fifty, but um I think it's about fifty. And I would also add that the um, as I understand it, that the, it overwhelmingly passed. I mean, there is a lot of union support for this. Um, and I do think back to, I don't remember which council member asked the question. From conversations that I've had with the union, um, I think we can expect there will be quite a number of people in the next two years, three years, that would be eligible to retire, that will take advantage of this um opportunity.
I can hear him gun really clearly.
Do you have any conjectures about what this is gonna cost the city? I mean, for next year's budget discussion?
No, because this, this is out of the pension fund. These funds don't come into our operating budget. These funds come into the budget, I mean, into the uh pension. The funds are set aside in the pension. So every year where they, right, it's a carve-out. And it's set aside in a separate account. So the benefit to the police officer, the benefit to the city is regardless as to whether that police officer, that retiring police officer stayed, he would be drawing his pension out of that account. And we would be backfilling and paying um a new recruit. Here, we get to keep that experienced um veteran um mentor because that's, at this point, that's what these police officers are. They're mentors, they're they're training officers. You know, we get to keep them for three to five more years, um rebuild the force um and then.
Under these conditions, do they, do these officers continue to pay into the pension when they're collecting their pension?
No.
No, it's frozen. It's frozen once they enter the drop. City doesn't pay and the officer doesn't pay. The pension is.
That is correct. Just as they would be drawing down if they retire.
Right.
Those funds will be leaving that account regardless.
There is also an administrative fee, so what they're, what they're collecting and and what's being put aside in those years that they're in drop is ten percent less than what they would be taking if they had traditionally just retired. So there's that piece too.
We get this, and it's vaguely related. Chief, do we have our existing in our school a training program within like the high school for police officers? I mean, clearly this is a, a problem. I hate these kind of Band-Aid, you know?
Systemic.
Kind of, yeah, 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 kind of pinky, pinky sort of solutions to problems that are serious and important to deal with. The, you know, the, the bigger focus is as a career path, is, is there anybody, anybody in the state of Connecticut addressing this? Like, how can we, and clearly from the events of the last couple of years, the recurring theme over and over and over again is that we've got young officers who don't have enough training. I mean, can't we begin as a career path?
Right now, we have what's called an explorer program where we bring young kids into the uh profession. Uh, we have advisors at the department that bring um young kids that are interested in being police officers. Right now, we have about eleven explorers. Uh, it's been a program that's been around for quite a long time. To be very honest with you, this is a Band-Aid. And the, the, the challenge is retaining the people I currently have now. Our salaries are not uh high salaries. Um, I'm competing against other departments that have, have higher salaries for their officers. I'm competing against other, other departments that have pensions for their officers. We have to address the pension issue with the young guys, so we need to bring the pension back for these young guys to retain these guys. Um, I know it's not anything that anybody wants to hear, but guys are leaving the department and other departments that have the defined contribution, the four oh ones, are leaving their departments for departments that have pensions. When there's vacancies in these departments, these departments are getting a plethora of applicants to come into their department for those defined benefits. Um, we don't have that anymore. So right now, we're dealing with, this, this is going to hold on to my senior people, which is extremely critical for my department. But it's also, but, but we also need to address the younger people who don't have, um, who don't have this either.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this whole bubble of problems, is this, do you guys, do you work with public safety? Is this like an ongoing discussion? I know.
There are ongoing, yes, there are ongoing discussions, but not only here on the local level with boards, but um on the state level, I, I, as a member of C C M, we have conversations um uh at the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, mayors across the state. I, I just had a conversation with Merrill Larry about his attraction and retention efforts. Um, they are a pensioned department. They're having the exact same issues we are, worse. I mean, he was sharing that, you know, they put on an all-call, they get four hundred people saying, I'm interested. Two of them apply, fifteen of them end up in an interview. And of the fifteen, like, three of them get hired. It is, it is a bigger problem. Um, to your question about education, Greater Hartford Public Safety Academy, I know there's a, a crack does an academy. Um, and there are some, you know, uh, when we talk about those, uh, those learning communities in our high school. Pathway, that's the word I'm looking for, yeah.
But, but even if you look at the north, like Northwestern Connecticut Community College, who has a criminal justice degree program, an associate's, uh, entry level a college degree for associate's degrees.
Yeah.
Their, their, their participation level, talking to Professor Mike Emanuel, who is a former member of our department who heads that program, their, their numbers are way down. There just doesn't seem to be an interest in a lot of, as it was in years past um for this line of work. So it's very, very difficult to recruit people into this program. Yes, uh, the mayor is correct that what cities such as Waterbury, Hartford, they're losing people as well. Um, but you also have to look at what the call volume of Waterbury is. These guys are getting burnt out in those large cities. My guys are starting to get burnt out. Um, they're, they're, they really are starting to, to, to flounder a little bit because they're constantly getting ordered in so that I can maintain my, uh, my love, my shift level and to maintain my minimum patrols. There are towns that brought the pensions back to retain their people, and they've done very well with retaining their people. Branford's brought their pension back. Rocky Hill has brought their pensions back. So other, other towns have brought their pensions back, recognizing that it's difficult to recruit young people into the, into the profession.
Excuse me, just, I'd like to make this not a pension discussion, but also
I, I, I'm just.
Only, only because of, you know, we are where we are.
I, I understand.
Why I get the numbers, but I do, what I really feel like, this is a cultural issue. And Chief, I think you've experienced it in your lifetime in this career, that, you know, this country has not recognized the value of the blue. And, you know, how you shift that change so you get younger people who want, you know, to line up and and be in the position um that you have lived your whole career. So I think it's bigger than, you know, whether you have a pension or not a pension. I'd love to see the data on that versus just, you know, a conversation at this point, but um I appreciate it, but I don't think at this point, it's much more than that. We, you know, we have a culture of black, don't back the blue. I mean, it's, it's.
There's no question about that, Councilwoman. I, I, I agree with you, but I, I'm just discussing the problem that we're having, not just for my department, but departments across the board.
Never realized this has gone a little afar from the motion. The motion on the floor is the approval of the drop plan, so without disrespect.
Because ultimately, this is again, an exception to a contract, and the exception is based on a whole series of of developments to your point, um, where we don't, the public is not involved in this sort of understanding of, of what the police, what they're, the ascent, how essential they are to the, the management and, and, and the running of a city and how we've lapsed in addressing the many needs as the role of the policeman has changed, particularly the last couple of years. And there's been so much negative press about what is essentially a very positive thing that they do. And that narrative's gotta be changed, and, and if elected officials are, no one else is gonna do it. We're not gonna do it. Tonight, certainly in the city, Torrington City Council, but at some point, there's gotta be a focused, you know, a move toward a focused conversation across the state on how do we get people involved in this career early on.
Right.
And support it with money and, and benefits.
But the problem, Paul, is that politicians are part of the problem. I mean.
Let's have that conversation.
That's a whole other issue, so you.
I have no problem.
Sorry.
Yes, you can.
Do you know what I mean?
Yes, I do.
Alright, so I have, I have a request to call the question. Uh, so the motion was made uh by Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilman Hona. I, I'm calling the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
I know. Exactly, yeah. It is Enfield, by the way, that has that Public Safety Academy. All right, so item three, I guess there's a sense of urgency in getting a cleaning of the Armory and Teen Center contract awarded. So I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city and award the contract for cleaning services to Borja Housekeeping LLC of Torrington for thirty one thousand eighty dollars.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Oliver, seconded by Councilwoman Cavanero. Questions on the motion or the contract?
I have a question.
Yes.
How long's the contract for?
So this contract is, I know, is Piny on the call? This is a. I see why you're asking the question, it's not in the.
Okay. Just, just curious, not that I disagree with it, I just, no, I usually. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. For a whole year, is it multiple years?
It is a one-year contract.
One year, thank you.
With a two thousand five hundred ninety dollar monthly price or a total annual price of thirty one eighty. Other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item four, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to award the rental portable toilets to United Rentals DDA, reliable onsite services, Robin to Falls, to act and to act on behalf of the city regarding execution of the contract and its administration as presented in the purchasing agent's memo dated May nineteen, twenty twenty two.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manichia.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Waldron. Questions on the contract? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I, I realize this on the agenda is very vague.
There is a verb in there.
There is, yes. I believe the contract was sent to the council members this afternoon. So I will entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to award the contract for the twenty twenty two fireworks display to Zambelli Fireworks Manufacturing Company in the sum of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. Do you have a motion? Thank you. I heard Councilwoman Manichia, I heard.
Second.
Councilwoman Oliver. Questions? And they know that Brett Simmons is on the call, I believe, is on the call? Yeah. So, yeah, it is actually the purchasing agent and the Parks and Recreation Director that's making the recommendation. And I would only add for the public information that this firework display, because of cost escalation and the dreaded supply chain excuses, will be considerably fewer displays than we've had in the past. I think we went from eleven hundred down to about six sixty. And the cost is about five thousand dollars higher than it was last year. It will be, it will be great. All right, if there are no questions for me or for Mr. Simmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, seconded by Councilwoman Hona, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned.